Welcome to tonight's meeting of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland on May thirteenth, twenty twenty four at six P M. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilman DeWalt. Councilwoman Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Mills.
Here.
Councilwoman Clark.
Here.
President Cole.
Here.
Mayor Sidnor.
Here.
You have a corner, Mr. President.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item number three is the report of the Mayor and City Council. I will start with Mr. DeWalt. Ms. Green, is Mr. DeWalt with us tonight?
Sorry, he's not on the meeting.
All right, we will move on to, uh, Councilmember Clark.
Thank you, President Cole. Uh, since our April twenty second meeting, I've had the pleasure of doing the following. Attending multiple city budget review meetings, which is a priority for us, uh, which city staff has answered questions that I desired uh clarity on during our budget process. Thank you to each staff member for their time and careful planning during this budget process. Uh, in addition, I met with, uh, the Zeta Phi Beta Maryland Chapter Sorority to discuss an upcoming community event, uh, to include Laurel residents. Also, congratulations to all employee, all City of Laurel employees who received awards on Friday. Each of you play a crucial role in maintaining the functionality, efficiency, and overall well-being of our Laurel community. From public safety officers to administrative staff, your contributions to the City of Laurel never goes unnoticed, and we appreciate the hard work and dedication of each employee. I also attended Music at the Mansion, which had an outstanding band, and the mansion was decorated so nicely for their first public open houses on Saturday. Uh, it was also great seeing everyone at the Main Street Festival this weekend. It's always a great reminder of what a close-knit community we are, from the many hugs that I saw in the streets, to the neighbors greeting other neighbors and external residents complimenting on how amazing our community is. I enjoyed spending time greeting visitors and residents side by side with the Juneteenth Committee at the vendor table. As a reminder, don't forget to add this to your calendar, the City of Laurel Juneteenth Committee will be hosting Freedom Day, a celebration of Juneteenth with residents and friends from three P M. to seven P M. at Granville Goody Park, directly across from the Laurel Town Center. If you're interested in being a vendor at this event or showcasing your talent, please email laurelcityjuneteenth@gmail.com. Last of my report, I believe that it's so important, um, to connect with other municipalities, elected officials, and residents, uh, to enhance the viability of the City of Laurel. I am honored to announce that I was appointed to the National League of Cities National Black Caucus of Elected Officials Committee. Uh, thank you to the National League of Cities, and I look forward to proudly representing the City of Laurel during our outreach and networking opportunities. Thank you, Councilmember Cole.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Councilmember Mills?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, good evening, everyone. I, uh, had the pleasures of, um, having, uh, since April twenty fourth, had the Arbor Day event, uh, attended the Arbor Day event, and that was held at the Marcus Colbert, Colbert, uh, Community Field, and, uh, we planted trees, and, um, since that day, there are probably over a hundred trees planted in that community now. And, um, since, uh, April twenty seventh, um, at the Laurel Library, Martin Mitchell had a, uh, was there at the Explanishment Clinic, uh, April twenty seventh, and, uh, that was pretty, that was, that went pretty well as well. Uh, April twenty ninth, um, we had the, um, the Fair for Fair Housing Summit, and that was held at the Municipal Building, and, uh, pretty interesting about that as well. Um, trying to learn more about the fair housing and understanding more about it, how, how that, that fair part works. Uh, I have some concern about that. May third, we, I, uh, was at the Career Day at Vansville Elementary School, and I talked to probably about ten classrooms that day. We had a great day that day, and, uh, shared a whole lot of gifts on that day as well, something to, something for them to remember. May fourth, at the Lake Fest at the Goody Park, um, that was, um, that, it was, it, it rained, but it did not stop, it didn't stop people from coming out, and, uh, we put our umbrellas up, put our raincoats on, and we had a heck of a time. Kids were still out there playing, had a lot of, uh, animals that you can pet, uh, and, uh, it was, it was, it was a good time. Uh, um, I saw some young ladies climbing the wall, and they were way up there on that wall, and I was surprised, like, wow, you know? It took me a little more couragement to get up on that hill, on that wall, though. Uh, May eighth, I was at the, and I'm very proud to, uh, announce this, I was at Virginia Tech, uh, for the Donning of the Kentie Cloth. Uh, my daughter, I, Jatia, she became Dr. Mills. She's the, uh, first to become a doctor in my family, so I'm very proud of her and hope she goes far, far in her career, uh, at NIH. Um, May tenth, there was a ribbon cutting up, um, at the Walmart, and they were pumped up at that Walmart. Lord have mercy. Yeah, and I, um, nowhere else can you take a picture with, with Tony the Tiger and the next Lee Quick Rabbit, okay? We, we had a great time, we had a great time. And, uh, last, last but not least, the, uh, Main, Main Street Festival, uh, that was, that was, that was a great day. I'm so glad that we had a successful day. Perfect weather. I mean, everybody were out, there were cars parked everywhere. So, you know, a lot of people know about the Main Street Festival. You've seen a lot of people walking down the street with a turkey leg in their hand. So, proud of the Laurel Board of Trade, wish them much more success, and let's keep it going. This was my first year, uh, being in the front of the line instead of the back of the line with, with my trucks and everything, so. Main Street Festival, that was my, my last event, and, uh, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Councilwoman Johnson?
Good evening, everyone. Just to, um, briefly share my report, I think some of, um, what I've gone through this, um, since the last meeting has been echoed by some of my other council members, but I will touch on a couple briefly. Like, um, Councilmember Clark mentioned, it was great to review the budget with the staff, so we appreciate them taking the time to do that. This is our first time, you know, looking at a comprehensive budget, so it was nice that they were able to provide that assistance and guidance, so appreciate that. On May third, I had the privilege of attending the grand opening of the Miss Lounge on, um, Main Street with the mayor, so it was nice to see the new businesses opening up on Main Street. On Saturday, May fourth, I didn't go out and brave the rain, I stayed inside, but Peace on Batuxent hosted a High Noon Tea fundraiser for their, um, organization, the Respite Cancer Home, and Ms. Hill, the, um, organization's founder, wanted me to make sure that I shared the thank you, um, sincere and great, grateful thank you to the mayor and the city council for assistance with the event, you know, providing the venue and all the assistance she needed with getting that, um, taken care of, so she sends her thanks. On Wednesday, May the eighth, had the opportunity to attend one of the Homeowners Association meetings, also with the mayor and chief, um, of police. So that was interesting, it's always a good, good to hear what the residents have to say and hear how, you know, we respond and how we take care of those requests. So I like to attend those type of events. And like Councilman Mills mentioned, like Friday, May tenth was very, very busy, so the reopening for the remodel of Walmart was so, so exciting. Um, fun to take pictures with those, um, the characters, I think we had most fun doing that and dancing. But to also note during that event, two of our local organizations, they received community grants, so good to see that Walmart, um, highlighted those organizations. And we also heard from a former student, high school and middle school student of Laurel City. He has products, we got some chicken fries, some fish fry, but he has his local products, scratch products, in the Walmart store. So it was just a proud moment for us as residents to see that and help support him. Um, also, on the tenth, I attended the Employee Award Ceremony, was good to be back with the employees of the city, and also attended the Music at the Mansion that he, and lastly, the, um, Main Street Festival was great to be in the parade, see everybody, and the weather was perfect. So, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. A lot of the stuff, as Ms. Johnson said, we've all been at together, so I, I will keep it brief. Um, on April twenty fifth, I participated in the Laurel Resist Question and Answer Session. Once a month, Laurel Resist meets to talk about different topics, uh, whether it's national, state, or local, and they encourage, uh, local elected officials to come in and, and answer questions for them. On April twenty sixth, I helped the Fourth of July Yard Sale Committee set up in, uh, the Multi Service Center for their Fourth of July fundraiser on the twenty seventh. Also, on the twenty seventh, I presented the mayor's proclamation to Sister Karen Lester for her retirement after sixty-four years of service at Saint Vincent Pilate High School. Ms. Lester started her career very early at the age of sixteen, and after a life of dedication to the school, she's finally retiring and will be greatly missed. On April thirtieth, I attended the Lars fundraiser at Blaze Pizza. On April, or on May second, I went to the opening of the Farmer's Market. For those that are, have not heard, the Farmer's Market is now weekly with lots of good vendors, fresh produce, and some amazing corn that's brought in, uh, because it's not quite in season yet. So if you're looking for corn to go with your crabs, they have it at the Farmer's Market. Um, on May third, I attended the celebration for Emeritus Status for Popps Grant at the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department Company Ten. Also, on May third, I attended the Ride for the Fallen Open House, uh, across from City Hall, they have their office there. Um, on the first Friday of every month, they host an open house for those that would like to join, so if you have a motorcycle and want to help benefit fallen veterans, please consider checking out Ride for the Fallen, their next event is in June. On May fourth, I attended Lake Fest, like Councilman Bill said, there was a lot of rain, it was a lot of fun going out, I was the first to take out the paddle boats and open the concession stand, so Parks and Rec, they are rain or shine, we appreciate all that they do for the city. On May fifth, I attended the Laurel Volunteer Fire Department Ladies Auxiliary, uh, Breakfast, another good fundraiser here in the city. Um, again, Parks and Rec was at it, we've heard the Music at the Mansion was also in the rain. They have an upcoming event next Saturday, rain is in the forecast. Mr. Bailey, I think you're gonna have to call down to Noah and ask him for some good weather for some of your events, but please come out, Parks and Rec puts on a lot of hard work to make these happen, whether it's raining or not. Um, finally, I want to give my condolences to the family of Dr. Glenn Knight Senior on his passing on April twenty third. Dr. Knight, uh, held his ministry, he was a, a pastor here in the DMV for over seventy years. Um, so, congrats to his family. That concludes my report, we will move on to Mayor Sidnor.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, everyone. Um, on April twenty fourth, April twenty seventh, I attended a conference in Atlanta, always continue training and learning how to be an efficient mayor for our city, so that conference in Atlanta held, uh, mayors throughout the country, networking and learning new information, so it was very informative conference, so. Thank the city for allowing me to go there as well. On April twenty ninth, I had the Housing Summit here, uh, Fair Housing Summit, April twenty ninth, we had, uh, Prince George County Department of Housing there, also had the Maryland Department of Community Development was there to assist us in communicating and getting our, mission out to our public. On May the first, I attended another meeting with the Metropolitan Washington Council of Government, uh, that meeting was, uh, held at, uh, in Washington, D.C., it's always held in Washington, D.C., when, um, Northern Virginia, Prince George County, uh, Montgomery County, St. Child County, all come together to talk about regional issues in our community and the big issues about the metro. And May the third was Career Day at the Fallen Elementary Schools, I attend Bonneville Elementary School for Career Day as well, and Vanville, um, Elementary School. And that, later on that day, I attended, uh, Laurel Volunteer, um, for recognition of Robert Grant, celebration for him, was a thing of service with the Fire Department. And also another new business opened up on Main Street, Miss Lounge, um, grand opening, Hookah Lounge, so if you went to Hookah, uh, try, try them out. And also attended a ride for Fallen, um, Veterans Organization, like Council President said, uh, open house every, uh, once a month on Friday, so, um, if you're interested in learning about the Fallen Soldiers, uh, please visit there. Then on May the fourth, as you mentioned before, Lake Fest at Granville Goody Park, wanna, um, recognize Park and Recreation again, like we always did. Um, all our city employees, uh, work very hard, get information out and put on activities for our city, and we thank you for that much. And I attended, later on that night, I attended a worship service at Blue, uh, at the Possible Worship Service Seventeen Year Anniversary, uh, recognizing them, someone invited me there, so, uh, attended church there. Then on May the fifth, uh, Tavken Up Church, uh, Tavken Up International World Day Church, it was a very informative service, they had, uh, different flags from different countries, all the different, um, uh, persons go to that church there, so very good informative service as well. This is, uh, important right here, Rural Ebony Network, they are an organization to help individuals in our city with taxes, they are certified by RRS. RRS was there to welcome those individuals that got certified to, uh, do taxes for our citizens here in the city, so, uh, if you, uh, having tax problems and you need someone to do your taxes, Rural Ebony Network will help you out with those taxes, they are certified by RRS. So, um, you should be confident and safe with them during your taxes. On May the seventh, attended Laurel High School Senior Award Ceremony, uh, the Mayor Award went to CNA Shauna, Shauna Thompson. Congratulations Shauna Thompson for receiving the Mayor Award. Uh, May the eighth, once again, we are, uh, HOA meeting the Board of Wellingtons, um, had a lot of questions there, uh, Chief Police was there along with Councilwoman Johnson. Uh, I think we answered most of their questions, and so they was pretty happy with, uh, the information that we, uh, um, was giving them as well. And like I said, the grand open of Walmart, like I say, more like a day party there, it was very, uh, energized, a grand opening. So I think, uh, Walmart inviting us out there, and they said they want to do some community service with us as well, so looking forward to, uh, ongoing relationship with Walmart there. And then congratulations to all the employees who received an award, uh, on May the tenth, once again, we all, all you guys worked very hard, and I guess all the ladies that worked very hard, we're very grateful for your service, we cannot do our job without you all, so we want to thank you and, uh, continue the wonderful work that you're doing for our city. And thank again Laurel Board of Trades for another outstanding Main Street Festival, I think the weather played on our side, people wanted to get outside the whole weekend, they came out. I just hope folks will continue to, uh, come to the, uh, Main Street and, um, recognize those business on Main Street, our small business, Main Street is small business of America, every city and municipality has a Main Street, and our job is try to encourage folks to come to Main Street and get business, send it to come to Main Street, do business there, so. Hopefully the citizens recognize that and will continue to support the smartest on Main Street. So once again, thank Laurel Board of Trades for all you do and continue, you know, another forty-four years next year. That's clear my point, Mr. President, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Hold on, Ms. I'm sorry, I got some announcement, sorry.
Sure, go ahead.
I keep forgetting about the announcements. Uh, May the eighteenth, we got the Laurel Helping Hands, the Mental Health Wellness, um, the Multi Service Center, it's gonna be from ten A M. to one P M. Once again, Laurel Helping Hands Mental Health Wellness Month, and as you know, May is Mental Health Month, and so we want to recognize those individuals, recognize folks to get the resources, if you suffer from any type of depression or anxiety, whatever you're going through, we asking you to, uh, come out there, learn some information on, from ten A M. to one P M. At the two oh four Fort Meereau at the Craig A Mo, Multi Service, Multi Service Center, so please come out there. Here's the Park Day, gonna be there at the Laurel Lakes, uh, Goody Park, so come out there with your kids today, Park and Rec probably have some stuff planned out there for us as well. And then we have the, uh, Tennis Fun Day, the Alpha Collin Field, at three forty-five to six P M. Move with the Mayor, that's the campaign. A move with the mayor throughout the United States, the City of Laurel, participate in that campaign, and the whole purpose is to get you out there moving, you know, if you have any type of depression, anxiety, anything like that, just come out there, have some fun, get your mind off of, uh, don't suffer, they say suffering silence, so we want you to move with us and, uh, recognize those type of things. And, um, May twenty-sixth is gonna be, uh, Joint Memorial Day Service at Ivory Hill from ten eight, ten thirty A M. to eleven thirty A M. Ivory Hill Cemetery, of course, on May twenty-seventh is Memorial Day, so we close, the offices are closed all day long, so thank you, Mr. President, I'm finishing it.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Moving on. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
President Cole?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item number five is General Public Hearing. I will open the General Public Hearing at six nineteen P M. We do have one resident signed up to speak, Madam Clerk, is the resident on the line?
Yes, uh, Ms. Eiffel is on, let me, uh, I'll go ahead and allow her to speak now.
Thank you very much. Welcome back, Ms. Eiffel. If, as a reminder, if you could please state your name and address for the record, and you have a two-minute time limit, starting at the end of, uh, stating your address, the floor is yours.
Georgina Eiffel, eighty-two thirty-one North Lake Court, Laurel, Maryland. Um, I would like to propose this evening, uh, that we go back to, or possibly go back to three-minute timeframe instead of the two-minute timeframe. I'm not sure why you ran well past seven P M. Uh, but since I've been attending the meetings, I've noticed that it's only been very few individuals. But again, that would allow more time to actually be able to express a thought. So, um, I would like to make that proposal, and I'm hoping that the, um, council would take that under consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Eiffel. You still have some time left, is there anything else? For this public hearing, if not, you're signed up again on agenda item number seven.
Yes, I, I'm not, nothing more on this topic, general public.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eiffel. Madam Clerk, is there anyone else signed up to speak? I know we had one, but I do not see them on the line.
Mr. President, that's it.
If no one else signed up to speak, I will close the general hearing at six twenty-two P M. Agenda item number six is a bid recommendation for Carroll Avenue Street Improvement Project, L.A. twenty-four dash zero zero one, Department of Public Works, Mr. Tommy Helms, you have the floor.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Sidnor, Council President Cole, and Laurel City Council Members. The Department of Public Works is requesting approval to proceed with the construction project, L.A. twenty-four zero zero one, Carroll Avenue Street Improvement Project. This project includes the construction and repair of concrete sidewalk, pedestrian ramps, concrete curbing, pedestrian co, crossing with signalization, raised crosswalk, and asphalt repair work, as well as resurfacing on Carroll Avenue from Seventh Street Easterly to Washington Boulevard, U.S. Route One, for its entire length in the City of Laurel, Maryland. At a sealed bid opening at two P M. April tenth, twenty twenty-four, the city received a total of six bids for this contract. The bids received from low to high were as follows. Superior Facilities Management Services, LLC, bid withdrawn was one hundred thirty-six thousand, three hundred twenty-two dollars and twenty cents. Espina Paving Incorporated, one hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents. E and R Services, Inc., two hundred thousand, four hundred sixty-five dollars. Francis O'Day Company Incorporated, two hundred twenty-eight thousand, one hundred seventy-four dollars. Ross Contract Incorporated, two hundred sixty-one thousand, four hundred thirty-two dollars. Metro Paving Incorporated, two hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars. Funding for this project is provided from F Y twenty-four Capital Improvement Project, Carroll Avenue Improvements. It is recommended that the Mayor and City Council of Laurel award the subject contract to Espina Paving Incorporated, a certified disadvantaged business enterprise, minority business enterprise, small business enterprise out of Woodbridge, Virginia, for the low bid of one hundred ninety thousand, eight hundred ninety-nine dollars and thirty cents, with an additional nineteen thousand, eighty-nine dollars and ninety-three cents as contingency, for a total of two hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred fifty-seven thou, uh, dollars and thirty cents. Esp, Espina Paving Incorporated has completed previous projects for the city. Should you have any questions or desire for their information, please contact Timothy Miller at three zero one seven two five zero zero eight, extension thirty-two oh eight. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Helms. This bid recommendation was on last week's, uh, Mayor and City Council Work Session. Are there any new questions or comments from the council? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. President, I would like to move that we approve to proceed with awarding the contract to Espina Paving for a total of two hundred sixteen thousand, two hundred fifty-seven dollars and thirty cents to make multiple repairs on Carroll Avenue from Seventh Street Easterly to Washington Boulevard.
Thank you, I have a motion, and do I have a second?
I'll second, Mr. President.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Councilwoman Clark?
Yes.
Councilman Mills?
Yes.
Councilwoman Johnson?
Yes.
President Cole?
Madam Clerk, I live on Carroll Avenue, I will abstain tonight.
Okay, motion carries.
Thank you. Agenda item number seven, introduction and first public hearing on Ordinance Number twenty twenty-six, an ordinance adopting the General Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program of the Mayor and City Council of Laurel, Maryland for the fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four, through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five, and to levy property taxes and authorize the collection of such taxes. Director Saylor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'd first like to begin by thanking the Mayor's Budget Committee of, uh, Ms. Navarro, Ms. Klinger, Ms. Barr, Ms. Polley, and, um, I, I have to give a special thank you to Ms. Woods, she works with me here in Budget and Personnel Services, and, uh, we work very closely, she works very hard on the salary budgets for all the full-time employees, um, and, uh, we spend a lot of time internally with, you know, various levels of meetings. I'd also like to thank the members of the departments and their budget staff for their, uh, input and the work that they do on the document. Uh, Ms. Kubek, who works on the document for us, and the Director of I.T., Mr. Cornwell Sheal, who, uh, helped us out of a jam with the document as well. Nothing's ever easy, so he helped us, uh, pull this together. And, um, so Ordinance twenty twenty-six is the encapsulation of the budget that we've been discussing over the last two weeks. Um, it's a forty-three million, two hundred ninety-seven thousand, two hundred forty-five dollars in the general operating budget. It is balanced, uh, with a real estate tax rate of seventy-one cents per hundred. The, uh, special overlay area of an additional three cents per hundred, and the personal property tax rate for business tax is a dollar sixty-nine per hundred. This budget provides to continue all city services. The, uh, provides for supplies and equipment for employees to perform those services, as well as it honors the CBA agreements that we'll have with, uh, that we have currently, uh, with the F O P, and will have with the Department of Public Works, providing for starting pay of, uh, thirty-five hour employees of forty-two thousand, three hundred fifteen dollars, a forty-hour employee, forty-one thousand, three hundred thirty dollars, and the starting pay for a police officer will be sixty-two thousand, five hundred sixty-six dollars. Also in the ordinance is the Capital Improvement Program, which we've also discussed and gone over. It's a reauthorization of funds of twenty-five million, three hundred forty-eight thousand, one hundred eighty-two dollars, and new project funding of four million, seven hundred sixty-nine thousand, six hundred and four dollars. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Director Saylor. I will.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, if I could, just draw your attention, I apologize, on page two of the ordinance, the community promotion total should be one hundred fifty-eight thousand, seven hundred eighty-seven dollars, and the total in the Office of Emergency Management Department Number three two five should be seven hundred twenty-eight thousand, four hundred fifty-two dollars. Again, this doesn't change the bottom line, it, it represents exactly what we have previously discussed. The error was on my part. Thank you.
Thank you, Director. I will open the General Public Hearing on Ordinance Number twenty twenty-six at six twenty-nine P M. We have Ms. Eiffel signed up again to speak. Madam Clerk, is Ms. Eiffel available?
Yes, I will unmute her now.
Georgina Eiffel, eighty-two thirty-one North Lake Court, Laurel, Maryland.
Thank you.
You're welcome. At the last council meeting, I had addressed on page thirty-nine of the twenty-three twenty-four budget, a line item in the amount of fifteen thousand dollars. Um, I questioned, it stated it was collective bargaining, and I asked it that specifically, D P W, collective bargaining, and I was told yes. Um, I was hoping with the proposed budget, I would see from what we budgeted, what was actually spent. from what we budgeted, what was actually spent. Um, however, I'm noticing now that there is a different line item in this new budget. It's called Labor Council Service, and it's an amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. Um, and it is being, um, lumped in or grouped in with Epic Commission Council, which previously had a seventy-five-hundred-dollar budget, and it seemed like they did not spend that entire amount. Um, again, I am curious because I saw changes in the line item. Previously, the collective bargaining was lumped in with, um, I think it was legislative, legislative fees, and it, the budget amount was three oh three. Uh, for some reason, now it's showing on this report, the budget amount was two ninety-six. So was there an amended budget? Some, somewhere in between the two? Here's a question that I'm asking, and, um, and I guess the only way I'll find out the total amount for collective bargaining would be via a P I A, P I A. Because again, is this labor council service for collective bargaining? Is that something anyone can answer at this point in time?
Thank you, Ms. Eiffel. This is general public hearing. The, uh, please ask your questions. The administration will get back to you in writing.
Okay.
So.
That, tha- tha- that is my question. The change from the three oh three down to two ninety-six, labor council service, and the actual expenses for collective bargaining, which was originally on page thirty-nine of the twenty-three twenty-four budget.
Thank you very much, Ms. Eiffel.
You're welcome.
With no one further signed up to speak, it's night's general public hearing on ordinance number twenty-two six. I will close the general public hearing at six thirty-two P M. I will now open the floor to the council members. Everyone has had a chance to ask their questions in writing. Responses have been given back to council members. Um, given some of the new documents that have come out, are there any new questions or comments from the council members? I will start with Ms. Johnson tonight.
No, I don't have any additional questions at this time.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Councilwoman Clark?
No additional questions. I just wanted to thank the staff for answering all of the questions that I did have, um, and for ensuring that we will have additional, uh, opportunities for, uh, seniors and children, as well as, uh, additional, uh, programs. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Councilmember Mills?
Yes, I, um, I do have a question, uh, for direct, Director Saylor. Um, thank you, Mr. President. Um, on the, uh, on the line item, um, the revised budget, uh, we, I think that we just got the, uh, what a capital improvement program. Uh, the line is for the Craig A Mo, uh, Laurel Multi-Service Center, um, seven hundred seventy-seven thousand, four hundred thirty-four. I was just, I was just wondering, you know, how do we get that number? Um, with a building not, you know, not being used thus far.
Yes, sir, Councilman Mills, the, the seven seventy-seven, four thirty-four is the amount of funding remaining in the project at that point in time that we need you to reauthorize so we can continue on with the project. Well, when we put the ordinance together, we have to just fuck, you know, at a period in time, see what all the balances are of all the capital projects and, and put them into the ordinance so that these projects can keep moving along. That, that is not operating funds. Those are parsh- part of the renovation funds.
Okay, it's, now, uh, there, there was another line for the, um, for the same, um, facility. What, uh?
Yes, sir, that was under the, the new funding on page five.
Okay, thank you. Yes, four to three million.
Yes, so during the, um, the recent general assembly session in Annapolis, we were awarded three million dollars again for the renovations of the, of the facility.
Okay, so.
So that's new mon- new money, if you will.
But that, that money is, is, that money, I just want to make clear because this is open to the public. That, that, that money is not money coming from our constituents. That money is coming from the state?
Coming from the state of Maryland, yes. The three million is coming from the state of Maryland. The, the seven seventy-seven, four thirty-four is money we already have in hand um, from various sources.
Okay. All right. When we say various sources, you know, somebody can run away with that. Can we?
Oh, no, 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 no. It, it's came from city funds, other state funds from prior sessions of the general assembly in, in twenty-two and twenty-three. We also received funds.
Okay, so this was some, some found money?
No, it, it, it came through the budget process. It's just that I have to show it to you on the ordinance so that we can keep moving with the project. We need you to, as part of the or- the adoption of ordinance twenty-two six, I need you to reauthorize all these projects. Because the C I P doesn't stop at June thirty. We need to keep moving, you know, nothing fits nice and neat between July one and June thirty, so um, just officially, we need you to reauthorize those funds through the adoption of twenty-two six, as well as the operating budget.
All right, and do we have any idea as far as the operational, uh, funding?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, on, on page, on page two
Two?
of the ordinance.
Okay.
About two-thirds of the way down the page, it's, it's department number two-nine-four.
Yes.
For two hundred and sixty-two thousand, three hundred seventy-one dollars.
Okay. And so that, that, that's kind of like a ideal, ideal operation budget.
Well, so that's for the building maintenance. That'll, that two-nine-four department has the utility budget to pay the utilities. Um, the, um, some of the other services, you know, uh, exterminators, uh, you know, and other equipment, tables and chairs, um, and those things. Four lines down on department number three-two-six.
Yes.
That's where we have four hundred and sixty-three thousand, four seventeen. And that'll be the program budget.
Okay. Okay.
So that will, that will have the staff time, salaries, and some of the other, um, supply expenses to provide the services as far as the, um, helping with the, the food pantry service, um, and those types of supplies, the laundry service, uh, paying for the, um, uh, the, I'm sorry, the barber and the, the hairdresser, uh, and paying for other services where we could have folks in to teach how to go through a job interview and, you know, and help them along their way.
Okay. Now, now, to, to kind of reduce these, uh, to reduce that programs, that number there, let me say. Would it be possible, because we're inviting other organizations to come in, you know, um, I mean, I, I know like Lars, um, I mean, that's kind of like a almost like a catch twenty-two, like whereas though we're inviting them in, but we also provide them with funding as well. So, I was, my question was, like, instead of, instead of, you know, trying to find ways to reduce the, the, those funds, is it possible to have organizations that we are inviting to come into to use this facility for them to pay? To have these type of, you know, organizations. I mean, like Lars is, Lars is helping people with um, housing and trying to, uh, better, better themselves. Well, you know, when you look good, you feel good, and that, that comes with barbering and hairstylists and so forth. So i- is that something that they could pay for? You know, other things?
I, I think, I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt you.
Yeah.
I think that they, um, they'll be able to, when we have the, um, transitional housing, if their resources are going to be you know, pretty well, um, occupied in, in certain regards of helping those folks, you know, because they can only be there for up to six months. Um, so they'll have caseworkers. We've provided them with office space for the caseworkers. You know, there'll be office space for the Veterans Affairs to come in, and, and folks can apply for their veterans benefits or social security and, um, so, uh, maybe Ms. Barr can speak more to it, but I think our contribution was providing the facility, bringing all the resources together to, you know, help people, give them a hand up and.
Yeah, I think when you go through, uh, Ms. Cornwell's budget, the program budget, you'll see that the ma- the majority of that, um, excuse me, of that budget will be compensation. That would be the salary for the center, um, the center director, or the facility manager, the assistant facility manager, the front desk staff, to the individuals that will be in, um, that are coordinating the building and the use of the building. Um, and then you'll see things like office supplies, um, general supplies that are needed for day-to-day operations that we wouldn't necessarily be relying on volunteers to give us products. However, having said that, yes, we are always taking donations, donations for the, um, the food pantry area, donations, you know, if, 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 if somebody wants to donate to us, um, shampoo and, and personal hygiene items, those types of things, uh, those will be items that we wouldn't have to then purchase to be able to give out to clients who are coming in. But yes, like the, the services upstairs for, that Lars, um, will be funding. The city will not be, um, funding the staff who are going to be up, um, working as caseworkers for the transitional housing or, um, giving out sheets and towels. Those, those are, that is funding that will be coming through Lars. Um, the same with the kitchen area. Our partners at, at Fish, um, they will be bringing in the food that's going to be distributed. They will be having their volunteers who are doing the cooking and distribution, so that's not something that the city is going to be paying for. Mainly what you're seeing are, are just general types of operational things, you know, papers, paper and pens and our copy machine and computer s- uh, supplies and just general, general things like that to operate, to keep the building operating that we know we're not going to necessarily get, um, volunteer donations for.
Okay, but with, with, with this, with this line saying programs, my, my only concern is, I, I'm wishing to try to find, I have two organizations that I'm trying to find money for. Law, the, uh, Laurel Cats and the, and the Boys and Girls Club. And so I'm just trying to, uh, you know, s- squeeze a dime out of a dollar here, you know, to, to try to help and facilitate these two organizations any way which way we possibly can. So I'm just asking these questions for us to, you know.
Mr. Mills, the mayor has his hand up, but we'll move over to him for a second, and I'll come back to you.
Yeah. I'm Mr. Mills. I think, um, the C I P, but I can explain it to you more. So like, Director Saylor said, that's money is already authorized, and if we don't spend that money, that money got to get carried over, so we got to authorize it back into this fiscal year budget. Um, once the budget, this is the budget, um, we look at the budget, we give you opportunity to review the budget. Um, this is the budget. This is the first public hearing on the budget. This is the set budget right now, um, and the second hearing would be, um, which, well, the second one is this month, that we vote on the budget. So it's two public hearings, vote on the budget, and this is the budget we have. So there's no money would be squeezed out anywhere else. This is what the budget that we have, and so when you vote on it, you'll vote on it either yes or you vote no. Um, this is the budget that we submit to the council.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mayor. Anything else, Mr. Mills?
No, that answered my question.
Thank you. Uh, I don't have any further questions tonight. I did want to thank staff. Um, I know that my, my format isn't always the easiest, but you guys answered all thirty-four of my Excel question, uh, uh, that I submitted to you, um. Every year I get a little bit less knowing the, the format of the budget, uh, to council members. If you do have any other questions, I am happy to help you answer any of them, looking through the pages. Um, before we, we end on this agenda item tonight, I would like to ask if the mayor has any further comments or questions.
Um, just basically what I said to Mr. Mills, uh, once I was going to thank the staff, uh, for hard work, once the budget get approved, uh, have been approved yet, but the staff worked very hard, and we give council opportunity to, uh, send their request of things that you want in the budget. And, you know, so we do have a community promotion budget. As you can see, it's funded. The community promotion budget is funded for nonprofit organizations. And so we look at those nonprofit organizations through the community promotion. We didn't put no line items in there, but we can use community promotion budget to help nonprofit organizations throughout the year. And so I will begin with the council. There is some additional money left over from the non, the community promotion budget. Um, not a lot of money, but, but you know, it could, I ask you, uh, for organizations, you know, we have the money I have left for there. And there are also be some other additional money once we, um, do the final but different adjustments, but you know, um, this is a lot of hard work here. That's why we ask you guys to, uh, submit stuff to us in advance. You know, normally the process work for next year. I've used January, um, it's around February, um, the mayor was sent out, um, myself, I'm the mayor now, but I was sent a request. You know, what do you want to see in the budget? It's a, it's a request, uh, I don't mean it's going to get put in the budget, but we will look at it, add it, you know, see what we can do because we got to pay the bills first, things of that nature. But community promotion, and we do put money into community promotion to help nonprofit organizations out. Once again, that's not any direct line item to say money is going to go directly to this organization, but there are grants and things of that nature that we have through, uh, Youth Service Bureau. And so we just have to, uh, advertise those things as well. So I just want to say, say that piece, and, uh, once again, I would thank staff, but, uh, a final meeting, once the budget get approved again, I think it's, uh, I can say that, but thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If council has any further questions, please feel free to submit those to staff for answer before the next, uh, meeting.
Mr. President, excuse me. Yeah, I, I, um, I left off that, um, I just wanted to thank the, um, Director Saylor and, um, and the department heads because, um, going through the budget, I mean, it was, it was almost, it was very good and very enlightening to sit down and have the lines, uh, you know, the line by line, I'm literally line by line going through this budget and, and working out the budget, and almost, uh, you know, it's, it's exciting to work to, to, uh, to, uh, approve the budget and, um, and just, you know, and find these numbers. And I really, really appreciate the education, the knowledge, the time that you all took. And, um, I, I, um, you know, I'm, I'm, I was just, it, it almost felt like leading up to Ramadan for fasting. It's just, it, it was, it's great, and I really appreciate it, and y'all did a wonderful job. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mills. Ordinance number twenty-two six will be placed on the agenda for the next in-person Marin City Council meeting on May twenty-eighth at six P M. This is a Tuesday. Because of the holiday for Memorial Day on the twenty-seventh, we will be meeting on a Tuesday. This will be on the agenda for second public hearing and possible action. With no further business to come before the Marin City Council, this meeting is adjourned.